The open session of the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, October 29th, and I do have a few announcements. Tomorrow night, Wednesday, at 6:00, at the B A T V Theater on the top floor of the Unified Arts Building at 46 Tappan Street, the Jennifer Lynch Committee Against Domestic Violence is showing the film Your American Teen. It's a documentary about sexual exploitation of teenage girls, and it really talks about things as serious as trafficking and as apparently less, but equally important, serious, just the way girls are portrayed in advertising. And afterwards, there'll be a discussion with the director, Charles Taylor Gould. On Thursday, it is Halloween, and you'll notice I'm skipping any discussion about Wednesday night, except to say that I gather that every Brookline police officer available will be on duty. On Thursday, it will be the last farmer's market of the season, from 1:30 until sunset in the Center Street West parking lot. And on Friday, we all fall back. So remember to set your clocks back one hour at 2:00 a.m. on Sunday morning, that's the official conversion time. And it's generally recommended that people use this date as a reminder to check your smoke detectors or any other safety devices that need to have batteries and make sure they're fresh. And then finally-
This is the, you said Friday, but it's the Saturday night to Sunday.
Saturday, sorry, did I, it's Saturday night, but on Sunday morning. 2:00 a.m. Sunday morning is the change time. And then I just have a sad note, and it's sad in part, well, it's sad, but it's just before Armistice Day, where he would have been present. Our World War II Silver and Bronze Star recipient and longtime local VFW leader Arthur Hurley passed away on Sunday, and he will be missed. He's been at every Veterans' Day and every Memorial Day event that I've attended in the years that I've been in, lived in Brookline and been on the Board of Selectmen, and was a significant member. So, other comments? Selectmen Daley?
Yes, I just wanted to, we're gonna really miss Arthur, and I visited him a couple of weeks ago, and he was brave to the end. He knew he was terminal, but he was handling it with great grace under pressure, as he did under fire in World War II.
Absolutely. And I guess it's also, I would like to mention that there will be a funeral mass at St. Mary's Church on Thursday at 10:00 a.m. Other comments or announcements?
Yeah, he also was at every Patriots' Day celebration.
That too.
Veterans' Day, Memorial Day, and Patriots' Day will not be the same without him.
You're absolutely right.
A man could give a salute and a stern look, it will forever be emblazoned in my mind, just how seriously and then dignity that he brought to those events. It was beautiful to watch him.
And a great source of jealousy. His uniform still fit.
Yes, 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 yes.
Yeah, that was very impressive.
All right, so let's move on to our-
I have one thing.
Oh, sorry, I missed that.
The Selectmen's Climate Action Committee met last night, and there's been a change in the leadership. Don Weitzman, a former Selectman himself, one of the founding members of the committee, stepped down as co-chair, and Keskia Toyafuko is the new co-chair. He has a lot of energy, and I'm looking forward to working with him.
Great. Oh, great. And I know that the, there's very close cooperation between the not-for-profit volunteer group, C-CAM, and the Climate Action Committee. They form a pretty powerful coalition. All right, to business, and the first item is the minutes from October 22nd. Are there additions or corrections?
I did have some little changes that I've given to Kate.
Likewise.
All right, then, I move that we approve the minutes from October 22nd as amended. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Benka?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectmen Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And then we have some gifts. The first one is to help support a project of the Brookline Commission for the Arts, a gift from the Bay State Federal Savings Charitable Foundation to provide some funding for our poet laureate. So I guess my first, actually, Selectmen Goldstein was very instrumental in establishing the poet laureate. Would you like to make the motion?
Sure. First, I'd like to point out that Bay State Federal Savings Charitable Foundation supported, this is the second year that they'll be making this gift, and we thank them very greatly. The poet laureate program is off to a great start, and there's a lot of, I want to thank the Brookline Arts Commission, because they've really taken the ball, run with it, and they're getting it geared up for next year and the years that follow. So with that in mind, I vote to accept the gift of two thou, oh, sorry, I wish it was $2,000.
Five.
Accept the gift of $500 from Bay State Federal Charity Foundation in connection with the poet laureate program.
All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Benka?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectmen Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And next, we have another grant. Commissioner Bennett, want to tell us about attending the International Code Council Final Action Hearing? Wow, final action?
Yeah, well, this was a grant that we, was brought to our attention, actually, by Laura Curtis Hayes in the planning department through the energy work that she's been doing. And this is, the International Code Council holds annual meetings, at which point they discuss code updates, code changes, and other issues. It's annual, it's throughout the state, throughout the United States, and this year was held in Atlantic City. We applied for the grant, we got a grant amount of $2,000, and two inspectors attended that seminar from October 4th to October 7th, and participated in the hearings. I think this is the first time Brookline's ever sent inspectors to this hearing, and it was a successful event for them. They're looking forward to further grants and maybe attending future annual hearings. So we'd look for this money to reimburse the inspectors for their expenses during this trip.
Questions for the commissioners? Selectmen Daley?
Yeah, I do have a question. So what is the International Code? And I know we have a pretty stringent code here in Massachusetts, so does this apply to us?
Yes, several years ago, Massachusetts adopted what's called the I-Codes, the International Codes.
Okay.
So that, that's numerous codes, there's 20 to 25 codes. The most important one that they adopted is the International Building Code, the Existing Building Code, Energy Code, and numerous others, Fire Code, and so forth. They adopted that with Mass amendments. So they adopted the entire code, and then they felt that some of them weren't applicable to Massachusetts, so they inserted their own amendments throughout.
And this was an opportunity to suggest amendments to that code?
To participate, yes. It's similar to like a town meeting when we vote to change zoning bylaws, the town bylaws. This was an opportunity for, actually, professionals and building officials throughout the United States to participate in those hearings.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for comments? Then I move that we accept a grant in the amount of $2,000 from the International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Benka?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectmen Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bullock, we now have a proposed agreement for legal services to do a closing, I guess, with Pine Street Inn? Is that right?
Yeah, so really, I'll hear if you have any questions.
Okay.
Just to execute a CDBG contract.
Yeah, pretty straightforward, right. Questions for members of the board?
Yes.
Seeing none, then I move that we approve and execute an agreement with Klein Hornig L.L.P. for CDBG-funded legal services in connection with Pine Street Inn's acquisition of 51, 53, and 55, 57 Beale Street. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Benka?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectmen Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
And thank you for staying. Sorry that you had to, or you didn't.
Sorry, right. And now I believe Mr. Peppa Sturgeon, you want to, or is it Mr. Dito? Oh, sorry. Chapter 90. Harvard Street, well, we have several. We have Harvard Street, we have Beverly Road, and we, Harvard Street and Beverly Road.
And that's it.
Okay, both completed?
They're both completed, and this is the final paperwork that we need to have the board execute in order to close these two projects out, and the reconstruction of Harvard Street from school to Kent, and reconstruction of Beverly Road, the full length. The state contributed on the Harvard Street project, $728,689.20 for that work, and on the Harvard Street project, they contributed $555,529.22. So when you sign this and I submit it, then any balance remaining money's left in these projects go back into our account, and we use them on future Chapter 90 roads.
Okay, questions?
Yes, Selectmen. I hope, Mr. Dito, that now that we've done Harvard Street and Beacon Street, that we are done with the commercial areas for a while, because you are, you're making us, the Board of Selectmen, persona non grata in the various stores and restaurants around towns.
Well, come on, part of it was the MWR, right? Not all of it was.
I don't know, I think we got the blame, even though it wasn't really our project.
Yeah, we're pretty much through on the commercial areas for a while.
Speaking of, as I recall, there was some unfinished business about Beacon Street, and part of that, at least that I remember in particular, was the old cast aluminum signs.
Yes.
Have those been identified and installed?
Yes, we've identified them, and we have several vendors that we're gonna send the request out to, to get prices back.
Okay, so we haven't even ordered them yet, but we have, we have a list of the ones that need to be replaced?
Yes, we have a list of the ones that need to be replaced, yes.
Okay.
Do we have the originals? I mean, I'm certainly one who's in favor of getting our money back. I don't recall signing this. Have the originals come up to the board for signature?
The-
Yeah.
I don't think we had them before, I mean, we have a pile of things to sign tonight, but I don't remember seeing either of these.
So we should, if we can get them.
Yeah, if those aren't the originals, then I'll make sure you have those.
Great, thank you.
All right, then we have two items, I'm gonna move them together. I move that we approve and execute a Chapter 90 final report to the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division in connection with contract number PW 11-07 Harvard Street Reconstruction and contract number PW 11-22 Beverly Road Reconstruction Project. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Benka?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectmen Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dito. So, do you want to do snow plowing and, oh, no, Commissioner's gonna do that one.
I'm the plow guy.
Excuse me. All right. Tell us about snow plowing. We're gonna have snow this winter, Commissioner.
Sometimes it seems like about nine months out of the year, you're coming before us to talk about snow plowing.
Well, that's the nature of the business. We have to be prepared all the time, we tell you that. Just a quick note about the street signs, if I could clarify a point on the street signs.
Yeah.
We are finishing up an inventory of all the cast aluminum street signs, because part of our agreement with the Preservation Commission was that we were also gonna look at the historic districts and put signs back up in the historic districts.
Oh, yes, yes.
So what we want to do is put out one bid to get all of those signs made, the ones on Beacon Street that we said we would replace, and the ones for the historic districts as well. So we're working on that, and when it's complete, we will put a bid up for the purchase of those.
Right, that's good news. I look forward to that.
The second thing I just wanted to remind you all was, and I heard your comments about Arthur Hurley. Arthur Hurley was very close to us as well, I don't know if you know this, but-
Oh, he was in your-
Arthur was a town employee-
Yeah, right.
For over 40 years. I had the pleasure of being Arthur's boss for probably 30 of those 40 years, and down at the water department, he was a serviceman at the water department, worked nights, and you couldn't ask for a better employee, so, you know, we're all very close to Arthur, and we will miss him.
He was an institution, I think, of the town, an important one.
So now, snow.
Okay, now to snow.
We did put out a bid for, for snow plowing and ice control, and we usually put out a multi-year bid. This was the year that the time was up for that bid. I should note that we only got one bidder this year.
I did observe that.
De La Sandro, De La Sandro happens to be the contractor that's been doing our work for the last four years, and he was the only bidder this year. And I think sometimes what happens is, is the other contractors see that, you know, and know his prices because he's bid it in the past, and they figure that they can't beat him, so. We were a little bit unhappy about some of the unit items, so I sat down, Mass General Law gives me the right to renegotiate these contracts, and I was able to get the price down about $4,000 by renegotiating some of the unit price items for pieces of equipment. So the $76,900 is what we're asking you to approve, and that is within our budget.
What was the price last year?
The last, price last year was about $74,000.
But that would have been a contract that was initiated several years earlier, right?
Yeah, it was, that was a two-year contract. That was, yeah, last year was the second year of that contract. But the prices had jumped up to, you know, $80,000, some of the bid prices had jumped up about 20 percent, we thought that was unreasonable, so he was willing to renegotiate.
Good job, without any competition, managing to negotiate that down a bit.
Selectmen Baker?
Yeah, are there, are there other companies that have the capacity to do this, or are, is De La Sandro one of, or the only one who really can serve the whole town?
There are certainly other contractors that have the capacity to do this. We've had them here in the past.
Okay.
Flett comes to mind, and a few others that have been contractors for us over the years. You know, generally, we look at contractors that have large volumes of equipment-
Yeah.
-that can respond very quickly to our needs. De La Sandro has a very large fleet of equipment, and I think that some of the other contractors have committed to, you know, shopping malls and places where they can leave their equipment for the season, and not have mobilization costs, so they really find this a little bit inconvenient to bid on. But De La Sandro's been certainly responsive to us over the years.
But we should be clear that our town employees do a great deal of the sale removal too. This is kind of a hybrid.
This is just operative effort.
Yeah. We don't call contractors in until we exceed four inches of snow.
This contract's just equipment, there's no personal service that comes with this?
Yeah, they come with operators.
Driver.
Oh, this comes with the driver?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they bid hourly rates for the piece of equipment and the operator.
Other questions before we take a vote?
Do the neighboring communities also use contractors? For example, does Newton, do they do it all in-house? Do they use contractors?
No, most everybody uses contractors to augment their own forces.
Do you know who Newton uses?
Not quite sure.
Okay.
I do, well, I guess I, they don't have one large contractor. Newton generally contracts off of many smaller contractors. I notice a lot of the landscapers with smaller pieces of equipment do a lot of work in Newton.
Now, I think it's, I think it's great that you can get one company to go to, and-
Yeah, they also provide a supervisor when their equipment is here, so we're not out running around chasing their trucks, we have a supervisor with them as well, so.
But they, I will say that in the past, I have been concerned about the idea of eliminating our own equipment entirely and going with outside contracted services, and when I see just one, one response to our RFP, that leads me to believe we have made the right decision to keep some capacity in-house.
Yeah, we do keep a lot of capacity in-house, and only rely on these folks for standby when, you know, it gets over and it'll be on what we can handle, so.
Okay, we're ready to take a vote? I move that we award and execute contract number PW 14-19 rental rates for snow plowing and ice control in the amount of $76,900 with De La Sandro Corporation of Avon, Mass. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Benka?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectmen Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And then we have a group of temporary licenses. Are there questions about any of these individually?
No, I just, I do want to mention that Brookline High School 21st Century Fund is one of these events on the 16th of November at the high school, and that's, they do some important fundraising for some programs at the high school, including an effort to try to diminish the achievement gap between minority students and other students, so it's a worthy one to go to, if anyone's interested.
Got my tickets all ready.
And to follow up, it will be on November 16th at 6:00 p.m., and it will be at the high school, in the main building on Greeno Street. Okay, then I move that we grant a temporary all kinds alcoholic beverage license to the Brookline High School 21st Century Fund in connection with the annual gala and fundraiser on November 16th. I also move that we grant a temporary all kinds alcoholic beverage license to Pine Manor College in connection with two events, one on November 16th and one on December 12th. And for the record, all of the appropriate approvals are in our packets, including safe service certification. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Benka?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectmen Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And then, moving to the main calendar, we have some unfinished business from the last meeting, which I believe we have now before us language that we can vote, so we, certainly. Selectmen Benka?
May I, may I just ask a question? There was an email that was at our place, which has additionally a licensee who sells alcohol to an underage person. Is that, we received this in our packet, and then this.
That's the same language that is now on that version, I think.
What's in the packet?
Right.
What's in the email should be added on to the paragraph.
It's added to the, in other words, it would be a-
Well, actually, it would, it's a substitute sentence.
Yeah, so, Selectmen Washinsky, would you care to walk us through this, since I believe you are the author of this language?
Yeah, okay. So what we're trying to do is, the way the regulation was worded, it seemed like it was a, it was, it was not in accordance with our regulations to accept anything other than the specified documents, so an out-of-state license, it seems the way it was written, you couldn't accept an out-of-state license. Whereas, the way we, the way the law's been explained to me is, the documents listed in the law are a safe harbor, and if the person turns out to be over 21, and even if they, they approved it with a valid out-of-state license, that's okay. But if they relied on the out-of-state license, and it turns out it was a forgery-
Or the person's underage.
And the person's underage.
And the person's underage, right.
Then we can sanction them. So what the language I proposed, and actually with the assistance of Attorney Carrera, it states clearly that if someone is underage, and they relied, and the licensee relied on an out-of, a forgery, then we can sanction them.
Okay, so where, I understand it, although I do find that the language of the law is particularly confusing.
Right.
Obfuscating. I do recognize that what we're trying to do is acknowledge that other forms of identification may be accepted but at risk.
Right.
So where would you like to insert your sentence, and what are we deleting?
So the sentence would, you would delete the last sentence, which states, "A license may be subject to sanction in the event a license relies on another form," et cetera, and instead, it would be additionally, "A licensee who sells alcohol to an underage person may be subject to sanction against the license in the event the licensee relied on proof of age other than one of the forms of identification enumerated in this section."
And to be clear, we're talking about language that appears in our alcoholic beverages regulations, that's Section A 24, and also the same language in common victular regulations having to do with bring your own bottles, which is Section A 15. So when we take the vote, maybe we need to vote separately the liquor language and the common vic language, and then we can vote the regulations, because I think at that point, we will have agreement about everything.
Now, to be clear on the record-
No, not clear.
Now, to be clear on the record, we have a October 15th draft, and we have an October 24th email from Patty Correa with substitute language for taking the liquor regulations first, for A 24. So what we are voting-
Yeah.
-is the October 15th draft as amended-
As amended.
-by the October 24th, 2013 email from Patty Correa, as further amended by the language additionally, "A licensee who sells alcohol,"
Okay.
-which Selectmen Washinsky just described, which is in a 1028 email from Nancy Daley.
To make it even more clear.
And that will replace the last sentence.
All right, I think we can make this clear, but-
We'll go over this with Kate.
We're not, first of all, we have not voted any language yet.
But that is what, right, that is-
So the first thing we're gonna do is vote to amend the, or to change, you can change it by amendment if you like, I don't know how technically we need to do this.
Yeah, I'll move-
But we want to add this language to Section A 24 of the liquor regulations.
Right, on Section A 24 identification cards, I would like to amend the language that's seen on the-
October 24th.
October 24th, 2013 memo from Patty Correa, and to delete the last line and insert additionally, "A licensee who sells alcohol to an underage person may be subject to sanction against the license in the event the licensee relied on proof of age other than one of the forms of identification enumerated in this section."
Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Benka?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectmen Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right, now, then, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion in the common victular regulations, Section A 15 BYOB subsection A, to the language on the October 24th, 2013 memo from Patty Correa, delete the last line and insert instead the language additionally, "A licensee who permits alcohol consumption by an underage person may be subject to sanction against the license in the event that the licensee relied on proof of age other than one of the forms of identification enumerated in this section."
All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Benka?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectmen Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, so now we have two sections, one for liquor regulations and one for common victular license regulations that are approved. So the next thing I propose is that we approve, as amended, the common victular regulations. Is everybody comfortable with that? I don't think we had any, we didn't have any other changes proposed for that. All right, so then, I'm moving that we approve the common victular regulations, known as prepared food sales regulations, amended with the common victular regulations, Section A 15 BYOB subsection A, as amended. But we're approving the entire regulations with this amendment. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Benka?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectmen Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I know this is complicated, but we're gonna do it. And then finally, unless there are other language changes that someone wishes to propose, I would move, are there any? Seeing none, I would move that we approve the alcoholic beverage regulations, sale of alcoholic beverages regulations, by amending Section A 24 identification cards with the language we just voted as amended from the memo dated October 24th, 2013, and we're approving the entire revised- two thousand and thirteen, and we're approving the entire revised alcoholic beverages regulations with this amendment. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We have done it. We have got both of our regulations up to date and amended.
And I, let me just thank the chair and Selectman Goldstein, who sort of took the laboring oar on this revision of regulations, somewhat thankless task, but thank you nonetheless.
Well, thank you to Patty Correa.
And I think we should, yeah, we should definitely thank Associate Town Council Patty Correa, who really did all the technical work, and I would say, we appreciate the fact that Selectman Wyszynski and others were able to get us to our final language, so collective successful effort.
Very good job.
Okay, next item is public safety personnel. Chief O'Leary.
I'm here to seek authorization from the board to hire for two public safety dispatches, and I just want to take a minute to explain why I'm asking for that. The first reason is, in January of two thousand and fourteen, one of our longtime dispatches, Brian Murphy's, and he will be retiring at the, at the end of that month, he came to us from the fire department when we merged together originally. He's been a great asset to us, and we'll miss him, but he's decided that he has worked enough years in his life, he's going to retire and put his feet up, so he'll be leaving us with-
I gather that he, he was eligible, has been eligible for retirement for some time, though, right?
Yes, yes. So that will leave a vacancy in the rank right there. As we look down the road, the next item on your agenda is the filling of police officer vacancies. And we have, the, the people that took the exams have just received their marks, they got their marks on October fifteenth. The list is supposed to be established sometime around November first, and if you authorize to hire, we're going to probably lose a couple of our dispatches at minimum. Some of the younger people that are in our dispatch staff took the exam, have scored high, we know they've scored high, the high nineties, and they will probably be coming up on our list to have us review. So, I don't think that I would want to see the dispatch center get stripped of multiple people at once, especially when you're heading into the vacation season, so what I'd like to do is ask the board to consider extending, expanding our table of organization in the dispatch center by one. Let us hire two and get them trained right now. One will be to fill the vacancy by, that's going to be left by Brian Murphy leaving, and the other will be by extending the, the numbers in there by one more. It'll reduce the impact of the, when we hire for the police officer positions, more or less. So that will give us more trained people, they'll be able to get them in the academy in the intervening couple of months, get them trained up and ready to go once the summer hits, and I think we'll be in much better shape by then. We'll also know where we stand on how many of the current dispatches we'll be hiring.
And I think if I play this scenario out, there might be additional dispatchers needed-
Yes.
-down the road, when you, when you've actually been able to identify the new recruits.
That's correct.
Okay. Other questions from members of the board for the chief, comments?
No.
Seems to be a very sound proposal.
Yeah, I think we, we can't afford to have our nine-one-ones service-
Absolutely.
...inadequately staffed.
Right. So, well then, let's see, and I don't believe, are there any questions about the request to fill the vacancies, which we can take up simultaneously, we'll take two separate votes, but are there any questions for the chief with regard to the vacancies?
I guess, I just, I have one question for, for Mr. Kluckner on temporarily expanding the staffing at the nine-one-one center. I assume that you have reviewed this and feel that we can do this within the budget?
From a budget point of view, yes.
Yeah, okay.
All right, then I will first move that we authorize filling two potential vacancies in the Public Safety Dispatch Center. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And then I also move that we authorize the police chief to requisition a list from the Department of Human Resources to fill eight police officer positions. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Go forth and seek, and good luck.
Can I ask you, Chief, for any of these, I know that recently by, because we give a veterans preference, we have been able to really expand the diversity in the department, and also, I think, you're kind of getting people with some level of training. To start with, are, are any of these people over in our nine-one-one center veterans?
No, they're not, they're not veterans.
Okay.
I think every one of them are college graduates, but they're not veterans.
Okay. And I, I would like to take advantage of the fact that we, we have you here, and I know you have special plans in place for tomorrow night, as, and also for Thursday night, which is Halloween. So for the public, would you mind just sort of summarizing how the, the area, I guess, it's not just Brookline, but the Brookline-Boston area will be affected because we have a very important baseball game, and we also apparently have a very important visitor tomorrow, as well as, we may or may not have a baseball game on Thursday, and we definitely will be having Halloween on Thursday.
Yes. With, with the, with the knowledge that the Red Sox got into the playoffs to begin with, we did do, take steps to limit the amount of time off for the first half and last halves of tomorrow night and Thursday night. And also went into discussions with spearheading the whole thing, crowds coming to Brookline, the parking, and if there was any trouble going on. Couple of our people have been in constant discussions with Boston, and the plan that was developed will go something like this. Our department will be fully staffed from the three-thirty shift starting tomorrow night. They will, that will include ten officers on bicycle, headed by sergeant, that will be assigned to Lower Beacon Street, starting at eight o'clock. At eight o'clock, they will meet up with some of the Boston offices, and their responsibility would include Lower Beacon, all around Park Drive, as far as to Kenmore Square, over to Fenway. They'll be mobile, they'll be on bicycles, and they'll stay in that mode until the end of the game, at which point they'll, will return then to Brookline. But by that time, they'll already been working with a squad from Boston, and they'll communicate with them. At nine-thirty at night, we'll have the last half officers, officers come in.
Which, for the broader audience, please explain when they normally would arrive.
It's, it's two hours then when they normally would have arrived, they would have started at-
Coming in early.
At eight, yeah, they would, they would have started at eleven-thirty. So they came in at nine-thirty, they'll have roll call at the station, they'll be given their assignments, they'll be given their cruises, and they'll be out into their assignments by quarter-ten, and they'll, they'll be in a waiting mode till the end of the game, see how, how's it going. The first half officers, which will normally end at eleven-thirty, will be held over as long as it takes to get everything cleared up. So at, from eleven-thirty on, we'll have a complement of anywhere from thirty-five to forty people, including a couple people on overtime, that'll be assigned to Lower Beacon, along Carm Ave, and areas like that. Boston is limiting, limiting the traffic from early in the evening, all around Fenway Park, along, which including parts of Beacon Street, Brookline Ave, that will directly, directly impact Brookline. They're eliminating parking along Beacon Street on their side of the, of the border. It's at least from Park Drive to Kenmore, and I'm, I'm told that it may come all the way back to St. Mary Street. We will still allow parking in Brookline, so we're going to get some foot traffic at the end of the game. But that's our, our plan right now. As far as the guests, at two, at two different times tomorrow night, the president is, will be heading into and out of the city of Boston along the Mass Pike, which we cover, a little bit of Brookline covers part of that Mass Pike and the bridges going over, and we'll be responsible for policing those areas.
And then on Thursday, will you have anybody still awake to do Halloween?
Hopefully after they congratulated the Red Sox, and then we'll-
And maybe we could have another game.
Well, we're hoping that it ends tomorrow night.
We're planning on it, okay.
I think we need to wrap this up.
Okay. She thinks I'm jinxing them.
All right, we won't talk about-
No, I mean, I think that we need to wrap up the series, is what I'm saying.
Oh, oh, right.
I'm not blaming you, Chief.
Thank you.
But I do think it's time that we, the Red Sox put this to bed.
So, but, but we do have normally special units around on Halloween, and I assume that if there should be an additional game, that will even make things a little more complicated.
It will, but we'll be able to handle it with that personnel. It'll, it'll be fine, because a lot of that earlier, you know, a lot of the, excuse me, the Halloween celebrations take place earlier in the evening.
Right.
So we'll be able to do that.
Frankly, and this might be a notice for families out there, I suspect that if there is a World Series game, seven on Halloween night, the trick-or-treaters are all going to be out earlier.
And at home in bed.
No, they'll be home, watch the game at eight oh seven. So, I think have your candy ready early, even for the older kids.
Could be, could, could very easily be.
Chief, can I ask you, you mentioned there, I, I believe that there'll be some bridges closed and some, and this is right about the time there might be increasing traffic and so forth, as people try to get to game six. So, are the Ts still running? Is that what you would advise people to do, is, the Ts are all going to keep running as normal?
Do Ts be running, probably, probably putting even more trains on. You cannot, you will not be able to get through Kenmore Square, you won't be able to get down Beacon Street, down Brookline Ave, all those roads will be closed right around game time, so they should take public transportation.
Wow, so you can't even walk?
For that, no, no, you could walk, but that's the way that Boston-
You could walk, you can't drive.
Boston will be protecting the area and trying to limit the amount of people and limited the potential problems in the area around Fenway.
But you will be able to walk down there, just not, not drive?
Yes.
No cars in there?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other questions while we have the chief before us?
Don't.
No? Okay, well, we, we will obviously cross our fingers and hope that there is only one more game, and that Halloween goes without any difficulties as smoothly as possible, and that all the trick-or-treaters have a great time, and that, and we know that our police will be out there guaranteeing public safety all through this, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next item has to do with the, another, I would call it a little bit of a housekeeping thing, to do with our process for dealing with citizen complaints. When we adopted citizen complaint procedures in two thousand and nine, there was a provision that there be a periodic assessment, and that there be two civilian citizens appointed to assist the chief in this process. And I will admit that these two civilian citizens have not, never been appointed, and we realized this spring that there was some difficulty, because one of them was meant to be appointed by the moderator, and the moderator respectfully said that it was not part of the moderator's job to take direction from the Board of Selectmen, which is in effect what they would, what the moderator would be doing, and that his responsibilities lay with town meeting. We've since had some clarification on that, and it is, on advice from town council, we have understood that we should modify this by amendment to delete the responsibility of the moderator, and make those two appointments by the Board of Selectmen who have the authority to do it. So are there any comments from members of the board? You have language before you.
No, it's, it's my understanding that the moderator's not inclined to make the appointment.
Yes, but we also know that, from town council's perspective, moderator should not have been included in the first place, and it was just simply something we didn't think through very carefully. So, the proposal therefore is to amend Section seventeen, periodic assessment, by deleting the phrase "and one appointed by the moderator of town meeting," and the word "one" in, before "appointed by the Board of Selectmen," and the sentence would finally read, "The police chief, assisted by two civilian citizens appointed by the Board of Selectmen, shall biennially provide the Board of Selectmen, town meeting, and the public with a report on the functioning of the police complaint procedures." And the rest of it's unchanged, right? No further changes. So are there any questions or comments from members of the board? Then I move that we amend the Item seventeen, periodic assessment, as I have just read, so that it will, the, the sentence will read, "The police chief, assisted by two civilian citizens appointed by the Board of Selectmen, shall biennially provide the Board of Selectmen, town meeting, and the public with a report on the functioning of the police complaint procedures." All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And I just would like for the record to make it clear that the police department has annually been producing statistics, this is the, they give it to us every, actually twice a year, this is the, biennially, right? This is the mid-year two thousand and thirteen, and in the mid-year two thousand and thirteen report, there is a, there is a report of the civilian complaints during the first six months of the year two thousand and thirteen, and we've had this same report twice a year from the chief. It just happens that we haven't, we haven't added to that the second report, which is really an assessment that was provided for in the original language, which we will now do. So in order to accomplish that, the next item before us is to make the appointment of the two civilian citizens. Therefore, I move that we appoint Ruth Ellen Fitch and Douglas Lewison to serve as civilian assistants to assist the chief of police, reporting on the functioning of the police complaint procedures required by Section seventeen in the periodic, seventeen, a periodic assessment of the procedures, which is in the document incorporated into the police policy manual, process for police department discipline and Selectmen's review. Ruth Ellen Fitch is the president of the Dimak Community Health Center, and is also an attorney, retired partner at Palmer and Lodge, Dodge, sorry, law firm. And Doug Lewison is a labor and defense attorney, attorney specializing in police representation with the law firm of Lewison, Costello, Condon, and Fath LLP. Any questions or comments from members of the board? Seeing none, then I move that we make those appointments. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And now we have some unfinished business with regard to warrant articles. And I actually found myself confused, oh, and, there's a difference on unpaid bills, maybe town administrator-
I just saw Mr. Boers here a minute ago.
Yeah, I was looking for Mr. Boers, he was here a minute ago, and he's disappeared. We voted no action, they voted favorable action. It seems like that's confusion.
Do we have any unpaid bills?
There are none.
There aren't any, which is maybe just a misunderstanding?
I bet you that's a typo from-
Well, we need, we need to shut that up and find out whether or not that's correct.
I see one member of the advisory committee here. Do you know anything about this?
No, okay. All right. And then our actual votes tonight, we can vote collective bargaining agreements, I think, is that correct?
Correct.
And to that purpose, do we have actual language? I don't remember seeing the language.
Well, there is a memorandum of understanding-
Right.
-between the town and the school traffic supervisors, which is Local thirteen fifty-eight of AFSME, and I think you could refer to that memorandum.
And I left it, I didn't bring it in with me. Okay, no, I have, I have the town administrator's copy, thank you very much. Okay, so, under the Article two, collective bargaining agreements, I move that we vote favorable action on the agreement between the town- on the agreement between the town and the school traffic supervisors, Local thirteen fifty-eight, American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees, Council ninety-three, AFLCIO.
As reflected--
As reflected in this document, which is a memorandum from the Human Resources Office, summarizing the agreement as ratified by the school traffic supervisors unanimously. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Binka?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectmen Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. And, I'll give that back to you. Next item is Article four, tobacco control. We understood that Mr. Vitolo was working on some changes, and I hope the version we have before us is the edited version.
If, if we have something that is thirteen point five--
Mm-hmm. But it's, it's, it's submitted as Article XX, which leads me to believe that it's before--
That's the, that appears to be the original draft.
Yeah, that's the original--
Yeah, I'm, I'm worried that this is, it had plenty of changes, but I'm worried that this is not the final edited--
I'm sorry, I don't know.
My, my, I mean, when, when Dr. Vitolo was before us--
Right.
There was, I mean, it was recognized that there were some things that had to be cleaned up, and my understanding was that he was doing that. And, and again, I, there's a member of the Advisory Committee here. Did a revised version of Tommy's article come to the Advisory Committee with those cleanups?
All right, so we should get that version, which I do not believe we have before us right now.
We're before the scheduled time for warrant articles. Is it possible that Dr. Vitolo's on his way here?
It is conceivable that he is. You're right. We could just hold it.
Why don't we hold it for at least ten minutes?
Yeah, sure. Well, if that's the case, then I'm perfectly happy to go ahead with--
Yeah, why don't we move ahead to, to Article ten?
Article ten, which we know the proponent is present. Ah. Mr. Cronin, are you going to rescue us with a version of the tobacco control?
Yeah, the, the version that--
Amended, or in some ways?
Yeah, the one that Tommy sent, that's in your packet--
Is--
--is the most recent. Yeah, he emailed me that Thursday or Friday.
Nope.
I don't know that we've got that one before us.
What does it look like?
What does it look like? Because what we've got looks to me like the one that we had originally.
Yeah, that's the one he sent.
It's not changed? All right. Let's compare your version to our version.
I have your version.
Okay.
It's what I gave Patty.
Okay. And it is the one that's titled Article eight point two point, eight point two three, but it says at the top, Article XX. Okay. So, this is Mr. Vitolo's, Dr. Vitolo's final version?
Yes.
And is this the version that was voted by the Advisory Committee, do you think?
Yes. And if you want to go to a different article, I will go and triple check for you.
Well, we can take your word for it, I guess.
No, don't do that.
I'm not, I'm not disputing.
Why don't you start discussing Article ten and I'll come back.
Okay, fine. Just, just as long as we know we're, we're using the same language the Advisory Committee used. That, that's, I think, where we would like to be. Then let's talk about off-street parking, which is, I believe, Article ten. So, Selectmen Goldstein, do you want to?
Well, I, I mean--
I know Selectmen Binka has some thoughts on this one too, but just summarize.
If you, if you'd like, well, to summarize first of all, Article ten came about as a result of the work of the moderators, Parking Committee, who evaluated the minimum number of parking spaces that would be required per unit in residential development in Brookline. And I stress "minimum" because there's no maximum. The developers are free to, and applicants for building permits are free to put as many parking spaces as they see fit. The question is, how many does the town require as a minimum? And as I've stated at previous meetings, the work of that committee was quite arduous, and there, there are very few clear answers and clear predictions that can be made about parking and, and how much is enough parking. It's a problem with many moving parts. The hanging fruit, if you will, the obvious place where our warrant article, where our zoning bylaw could be improved would, is in the area of one-bedroom and studio apartments. Currently, our bylaw requires two parking spaces for each of those uses, and it just does not, simply does not conform with the way people use one-bedroom and studio apartments. It's inherently obvious, I think, to most people that, particularly with respect to a studio apartment, that they're occupied by people, one person generally, and one person generally owns one car. And the result of that, that requirement is that we've, we're providing a disincentive for one-bedroom and studio apartments to be created in the town. It's, it's, there's, there's reasons why people think that that should remain, and I'll address those reasons if you want. I am aware that the Advisory Committee has voted to, for a different mechanism here, which would require a special permit in order to get that. And, and they've voted, you know, no action on the, on the current warrant article. But the, the, the point, and the reason that they've done this is because of a fear that this is going to lead to greater density and, and, and more development. And my answer to that is that we should not be letting our parking policy control our density issues. Density is controlled properly by FAR, by SECPAC, by height, by zoning districts that prescribe various types of uses and various limitations that can legitimately be put in place. But by trying to control it with parking, we're coming up with a warped transportation policy and a policy that unwittingly is promoting too many bed, units with too many bedrooms, artificially promoting units with too many bedrooms. In light of our school enrollment crisis, more bedrooms means more students and more pupils and bigger enrollment problems. If ever there was a time when we should not be artificially promoting excessive bedrooms, now is the time. And studio apartments seem the place to, to, to start. One-bedroom, I mean, one parking space per studio apartment and one parking space per one-bedroom apartment is, the, the statistics all show way more than enough as, as is. And as I said, it's low-hanging fruit. As I said, I'm, I'm aware that the Advisory Committee has, has voted otherwise on this. I think that, that town meeting should, should not necessarily be, be swayed by the Advisory Committee's vote on it and should have a, a full hearing of this and not, and not be influenced by, by Advisory Committee and/or a Board of Selectmen that, 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 you know, dismiss this matter without a full discussion. So, I'd like to see favorable action on it, although I am open to reasonable amendment.
And I have a technical question for you because I got confused when I was looking through this planning for tonight. And that is, the Planning Board made a few changes. And as the person who was involved with drafting of this, are you in agreement with the Planning Board's changes? Which version would you like us to be discussing? The Planning Board is on thirteen dash twenty-four, and the original petitioned article, I think, is on thirteen dash one.
I think--
I'm sorry, but I'm not, I'm not ready to, to address the Planning Boards.
Yeah, I, I was at, I was at the Planning Board hearing, and I believe the only change--
Yeah.
--that the Planning Board made was to insert the word "bedroom."
Okay.
Right. It was a non-substantive.
If that's the only change, that's fine. I just want to be clear when we do take a vote that we're working off the same.
And actually, you know, probably, rather than saying "three-plus bedroom", which is somewhat ambiguous, I think the terminology that they were using was "three or more bedrooms". So, if you're going to go with that version, and this is on thirteen dash twenty-four, you'd probably want to say "three or more bedroom", rather than "three plus", though I, the intent, I think, is clear that it's three, four, five or six. Three plus might be four, five, six and so forth.
Yeah, okay.
And what they were clearly talking about was "three or more", and they inserted the word "bedroom".
Selectmen Daley?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just say, I am going to support your article, Selectmen Goldstein. I think for, for green reasons, I'm, I'm not, not, I'm not sure whether you're right about your argument that it promotes multi-bedroom units, but I do think that it does promote more cars in a very densely, you know, the areas where you might find studios and one-bedrooms are kind of our denser parts of town. And I think that promoting sort of excess of car, car use there is not really a, a great thing for us to be doing as we're trying to reduce our carbon footprint. And additionally, I mean, I agree with you that if, I would like to see maybe our zoning include more open space in these areas as a way, you know, when you're, what the requirements are, rather than more parking spaces.
If, if you want me to address how requiring two parking spaces results in two-bedroom units, I can do that.
No, that's okay. I'm, I'm with you. You don't have to.
Selectmen Binka?
Yeah. To provide a, a bit of history, this basically started with a warrant article that was filed a couple of years ago--
About three years ago.
--in Town Meeting--
Seems like thirty, but yes.
--to, to reduce parking more generally. And that warrant article was, or min, to reduce minimum parking requirements more generally. And that was referred to a moderators' committee on parking. Selectmen Goldstein sat on that committee. It was chaired by Lee Selwyn, who's a town meeting member and a member of the Advisory Committee. And the moderators' committee really did quite an extensive job, including doing a survey that was sent out with the town census. And they had really quite a remarkably large return to that census. And the moderators' committee on parking came up with a recommendation to reduce parking for studio requirements from two parking spaces to one per unit and to reduce parking spaces for one-bedroom from two to one point five per unit. The zoning bylaw committee, which I chair, supported that article originally for a couple of reasons. Number one, I think we agreed, and, and the vote was, I, I think there were two or three votes against it, and the rest of the committee voted for it. We, we agreed that the parking for studios and one-bedrooms was, in, in the current zoning bylaw, was more than, more than needed. And we also recognized that by requiring the same number of parking spaces for two-bedroom or three-bedroom as you required for studio or one-bedroom units, you could be providing an incentive to build the larger units because of the cost that, simply the cost of building a parking space could be attached to a, a larger, more expensive, let me back up. The cost of building two parking spaces, minimum, could be attached to a larger, more expensive unit more readily and more easily than it could be attached to a studio or a one-bedroom unit, which might not need that parking. So, the zoning bylaw committee approved that, the article in its original form, as recommended by the moderators' committee on parking. I voted for that. Subsequent to that, the Advisory Committee voted no action by a vote of four to fourteen to three. And at the Advisory Committee, my understanding is that there were two major concerns that emerged. One is the concern that any reduction in parking will increase development generally, that it will make, it will reduce the cost of development, and therefore it will encourage development. It will encourage development in areas of town that already feel that they are too crowded. And, and therefore, there, there was a sort of overriding concern. And then there was a more specific concern that while a reduction in parking might make sense for new buildings, there was a concern that it would result in the reduction of parking requirements for existing buildings. That if you had studios and one-bedrooms in existing buildings, that suddenly the parking requirement, if this bylaw passed in its current form as, as recommended, that parking for those studio and one-bedrooms would be reduced and that could allow more development on those sites or could allow consequences that, that people could not anticipate and, and were concerned about. Recognizing that any change to the zoning bylaw requires a two-thirds vote at town meeting and recognizing that we are facing a four to fourteen to three no-action vote, vote by the Advisory Committee, I've suggested language, which is up on the board now and which you all have, which is basically a footnote that rather than making the reduction by right for studio and one-bedroom apartments, it would make it by special permit and would basically explicitly impose the special permit requirements of Section nine point oh five and impose a requirement that the parking available for units in existing buildings is not reduced, trying to address that concern. And that the Board of Appeals specifically determines that the reduction is appropriate in the specific case because of factors such as the proximity of public transportation, provision of shared automobile services and so forth. So, it would not be an across-the-board "as-of-right" reduction for studios and one-bedrooms. There would be certain conditions imposed on it. And there's a further provision that this footnote is designed to be construed and applied in its entirety. So, if there is a challenge to one provision in that, the entire reduction fails. So that a developer can, could not cherry pick and say, "Look, you can't, you can't require this part of the footnote." So, basically, what, what this is designed to do is to ensure that if there is a reduction, all of these requirements are met.
So, you're using a footnote, though, to change to special permit?
Yes. There are a number, if you look in your packet--
Just throw out the zoning bylaw.
If you look in, if you, actually, if you look in your packet at the table of parking requirements, which is there, this would be the fourth footnote. There are already three footnotes in that. And it's, it's the simplest way to, to get to this issue, I think. The moderator has approved this change as being within the scope. Town Council has looked at it, has said, obviously, this is not what the moderators' committee wanted. They wanted an "as-of-right". This is, I think, a, in a sense, a tactical question. The question is, are you going to sacrifice the perfect for the good? Will town meet, will two-thirds of town meetings support an "as-of-right" reduction for studios and one-bedrooms, given the concerns that I've raised? Or should we try this route?
Selectmen Waschinsky?
I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of--
I'm in favor of reducing the parking requirement for studios and one bedrooms for the reasons that Selectman Goldstein and Selectman Daley already stated.
As am I.
Right, and, sorry to leave you out. And, yeah, I'll approach it in the opposite directions in terms of incentives. To me, it's attractive to put incentives into the zoning bylaw to create smaller units. You kind of said that, approaching it from the incentives for larger units. Now we're removing that. You kind of said that. Maybe I'm saying the same thing. Let me float an alternative to what Selectman Banker floated. To me, the studios are kind of the real low-hanging fruit. So one alternative could be, we go by right for studios, as suggested in the warrant article, and then we use Selectman Banker's construction for one-bedroom units. So it would be a slight amendment of the language. So for one bedrooms under this construction, if you're going to go below two, you'd need to get a special permit to come down to one and a half. So I guess, as you said, Selectman Banker, it's kind of a tactical.
Exactly.
Decision. The approach I'm suggesting is perhaps pushing the envelope a little more.
Yeah. I mean, I guess my, I would go with the special permit for both. And I may be putting too much weight in the advisory committee vote, but just giving the, given the overwhelming no-action vote, I'd be concerned that, that, I mean, you need two-thirds of town meeting to change the zoning bylaw. I would be concerned that that vote is not there if it isn't as-of-right, even if that as-of-right is limited to studio apartments.
Right. I also think it's important that the question of reducing the parking go before town meeting, and that we shouldn't just go along with the advisory committee and go no-action.
Right. And I completely agree with that.
Selectman Goldstein, what's your thought?
Well, a couple thoughts. You know, the two rationales that Selectman Banker outlined why the advisory committee was against this are, you know, there's counterarguments to both of those arguments. The first, that it's going to, you know, create a flood of new development in town, first off, is false. I mean, the moderators' committee talked to developers. Developers do not use our parking requirements as their guide, and it's not going to open up a sudden floodgate of development. By the way, another thing, development is not a dirty word, and some people treat it like it is a dirty word. And development is necessary. It's part of our plan for expanding our tax base and balancing our fiscal budget in this town. And development that makes sense, and that is the best for the town, is a requirement no matter what we do. And we might as well choose paths that create the best kind of development for us. Given what we've already talked about on our school enrollment issue, taking away a disincentive for small units makes perfect sense at this juncture. The second point that Selectman Banker cited, as being the advisory committee's rationale for no action on this, has to do with redevelopment of older buildings. And to that, I'm going to simply point out that our bylaw already provides for a special permit for that purpose. And we, basically, to go to a special permit scheme for allowing the reduction is not accomplishing anything because it's already there with respect to the existing units. Am I not?
That's not correct.
Does the, the special permit is for?
There's a special permit, but it applies only to conversions.
Conversions is?
It doesn't, yeah.
Conversion is an existing, an existing property that's, you know, an old building, an existing building. And if that's the argument, well, we've already got a special permit for it. The last point is that, you know, knowing how property owners and developers work, a special permit is a disincentive. A developer, horrible a word as that is to say, a developer will take the path of least resistance, and if a special permit is required, they will avoid it if possible. And not in every instance, but in most instances. So, and that's how the incentive, the disincentive works. I mean, that's why there are no one-bedroom and studio apartments, or very few being proposed in this town right now. Why should you have to overspend for the parking associated with that unit, or get a special permit going, which can be a three- to six-month process in order to do it, when you might as well build larger units, sell them for, at higher premiums, that can absorb the cost of the extra parking space? So, having said that, and being politically aware, I take heed of what Selectman Banker has said, and I appreciate Selectman Washinsky's proposal. And if push comes to shove, I will support the Washinsky approach here of buy right for studios and special permit using the construction of Selectman Banker for one bedrooms.
Can I point out that the planning board actually supported the warrant article unamended?
Right.
So I have to say, you know, we're talking about a planning board which was willing to support and endorse a reduction, and a divided advisory committee, who knows, and a zoning.
Well, it wasn't divided.
All right. I'm saying, who knows why, not having been there. A zoning bylaw committee that was in favor of it in its original version.
Right.
So.
I'll also note the Climate Action Change Committee voted for it.
And Climate Action Change Committee is very much in favor of reduction. I'm inclined to go along with Selectman Goldstein and test whether or not we can actually find a way to have units built that will satisfy a demand for smaller units, and at the same time, reduce the parking requirement.
So are you suggesting, are you going to, are you going to move the planning board's language?
I was going to move the planning board's language.
Well, look, I, can I, I mean, I'm, I voted for the, I would change the planning board's language a little bit to clean up the.
That's a non-substantive.
The non-substantive.
Three or more bedrooms instead of three plus, right?
Right. I voted for that on the zoning bylaw committee. And I'll vote for it here. I would, though, I think, like to have, I would hope that at town meeting, if that gets defeated, that there is an option to go to this middle position, which is a special permit position. Pardon?
The order of the votes in town meeting would require the amendment before the main motion.
That's right.
We don't know.
I know, I know, and that's a problem.
Right. And so someone would have to offer that amendment.
Right. Well, we could have the amendment before.
But it wouldn't be the selectmen. It would be.
No, I, somebody could offer, somebody could offer the amendment. I suspect the people who want the as-of-right change would vote against the amendment. Then the entire motion would go before town meeting. If it does not get a two-thirds vote, the whole kit and caboodle falls. However, there could be a motion to reconsider at that point. And one could go back and try the footnote, I suspect, at that point, if somebody who voted on the winner's side.
If one wanted to do that motion to reconsider, I would suggest that you have a written sheet with it on there.
Yeah, no, I.
And that's handed out in advance, so the moderator will allow you to make that motion at that point.
Yeah, that's a good point.
But, so the chairman should make her motion. You should move to amend, and then we'll see how that vote goes.
All right.
All right. We're ready to go?
Ready to go.
Yeah, and let me just, let me just clarify one point. The Selectman Goldstein, the special permit now, the provision allowing a special permit now applies only to conversions of existing units. It allows that parking reduction for conversions. The whole goal behind this is to allow reductions for new buildings. I mean, that's what people would really like to do. And under our existing bylaw, that doesn't happen at all. So there is no special permit now that applies to new buildings. It's only for conversions.
Right. I agree with that point. But you said the second argument raised at the advisory committee was concern about older buildings.
Right.
And older buildings already have the ability through the conversion special permit to get the kind of relief we're talking about here.
Right, right.
And.
But that's actually, that's actually where people are, they don't want it to happen.
But it's already capable of happening.
It is, it is capable of happening. It's not capable of happening for new buildings. That's correct.
You know, another construction could be, we make it such that some version of either the amendment I was offering, or the amendment Selectman Banker was offering, becomes the main motion. And then a motion would be offered.
To amend it?
To amend to the original language, so that would get voted first.
Yeah, but still, you're going to have the difference between the 50% and the two-thirds vote. So you're going to be in that.
When I responded to your, to your suggestions, Selectman Washinsky, I said, "If push comes to shove."
Right.
Seeing now where this is going, I'm, you know, I want to see the planning board version approved here. And if, we've got several weeks before town meeting, if we take the temperature and realize the only way anything is going to pass.
Yeah, we can always reconsider.
Either we can reconsider, or, you know, on the floor of town meeting.
Or make sure that.
The one thing I do want to happen is, you know, this debate and this argument is important. It's good. It's for the best of the town. And to the extent that this position is not the two-thirds majority right now, people need to understand that this gulf or difference of viewpoint exists, and act accordingly in the future.
Selectman Banker.
Yeah, may I, may I just ask, has the advisory committee looked at this subsequent to their original four fourteen-three vote? Have they, have they looked at any special permit language? Have they reconsidered it, or are they still on, that was the last consideration, that no-action vote?
Any, any.
Anybody qualified to speak.
Yeah, okay.
I'll say, by the way, I wasn't there at the advisory committee hearing of this. I was there at the advisory school, school subcommittee, which made recommendation to the advisory committee. I wasn't there at the planning board either. I regret that my schedule hasn't allowed me to be there to, you know, trade punches on this throughout the process.
Well, I am comfortable with a fallback position. I'm not feeling militant about this particularly, but I do feel that it's important to have a debate. And I do believe that the only way to get there is to have alternate versions.
Right. Can I ask Selectman Banker, what would be the non-substantive changes you would make to the planning board motion?
Oh, I, if you go to page thirteen dash twenty-four, I think all I would do, that would be the vote, and I would change the word plus.
To three or more bedrooms. Right. All right. So shall we substitute?
In each of those categories.
And there are three different locations.
Three, three different places where it says three plus, that would be changed to three or more bedrooms.
Do you see? You got it?
Yep.
Okay. So I'm going to move the planning board.
I think Ms. Selko would like to comment on that.
Definitional, if you come over to the microphone, please.
Polly Selko, Assistant Director of Regulatory Planning. I just wanted to point out one thing, in case you do have this as an alternative motion, that where, where it says.
I've actually, this is not the language that you originally saw and commented on.
No, I know you had sent that to me. I still have a comment on it.
Okay, good.
Because it says, "In addition, the parking available for units in existing buildings is not reduced." However, I would just add that if it were a new unit in an existing building, it's unclear whether that would be reduced. I'm assuming it would be. That you're, and so if your intent is that it not, not be, then I think you have to say, not just existing buildings, but for new or existing units in existing buildings.
Okay. Okay.
I can expand on that if you have any questions.
I understand, and I accept that. I, okay, I understand the ambiguity.
All right. So, but, all right, if you want to move that as an amendment.
Let me, let me move that as an amendment with the change suggested by Ms. Selko.
Okay. And the main motion, Chairman DeWitt, includes the three or more bedrooms on the chart.
That's correct. The motion I've made, or thought I had made, but I'm not sure if I have, let's try this all over again. I am moving the language on page thirteen dash twenty-four of our packets tonight with substitute language, three or more bedrooms in each of the three categories where it says three-plus bedrooms. That's the language change I've moved. And.
I think we can take that as the main motion.
That's the main motion.
I don't think we really have to vote that.
Yeah, right. And then you're, you are proposing an amendment to this motion that would include studio and one-bedroom apartments. You're not making that change? Is that correct?
No. My, my amendment would, would be to keep the zoning bylaw as it is now.
Right.
And simply add the footnote. So it would, it would continue.
Okay. So you're, but then your amendment, it can't be an amendment to the main motion? Because the main motion, let me think about this for a minute.
It will be a substitute. It will be a substitute motion.
I think it's going to be a substitute motion.
Substitute motion. I mean, however, let's, let's just vote it and see whether it's construed as a substitute motion or an amendment to the main motion. My, my motion would be
Amendments come first. That part I will agree with you. I'm not sure what we're amending here, but the language that is being proposed is to add a footnote to the.
Existing zoning.
Existing zoning bylaw.
Existing.
And the language that you've got, that you've given us would include the phrase for studio and, correct? You're not taking out the studio. I just wanted to be clear about that.
That's correct, yeah.
And you're adding in line three, parking available for new or existing units in existing buildings?
Right.
Okay. All right. Are we all clear about the amendment to the existing zoning bylaw language? All right. So, hmm, Selectman Banker's amendment.
We're now voting whether to substitute his version for your version.
Right.
Basically, yes. All right. So if you prefer Selectman Banker's amendment, you vote yes. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
No.
Selectman Banker.
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein.
No.
Selectman Washinsky.
No.
And the chair votes no. So we have considered and rejected this amendment, and now we have before us the main motion, which is to amend the zoning bylaw, section 6.02, paragraph one, table of off-street parking requirements, with simply a language change to, as, as recommended by the planning board, with the language change of three or more bedrooms substituted. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Banker.
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectman Washinsky.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay.
And, and let me just say that.
And we will have this information available at the time of town meeting.
Right. And I don't know whether we want to put that into the report, the selectman's report that this is.
I think this, this selectman's report would be well-advised to include our discussion and consideration of different. and consideration of different versions, and if Mr. Cronin wasn't here to hear all of it, I'm sure you could have contributors providing drafts. Okay, alright, okay, alright, good. Very well, we have.
Thank you for a good discussion.
Yes, and thank you for thoughtful contributions, and I think we're all very sensitive to that two-thirds vote issue. Okay, lost track again. Where we are, ah, Dr. Vitolo, which version are we voting? And do we have the final one?
How do we know that we're looking at the final?
Yeah, how do we know which version we're voting? It is, agreed. Dr. Vitolo will agree, I hope, yes.
153 University Road.
Okay.
I apologize, I was only five minutes early. My son is learning to read, and so his bedtime story take more time than they used to.
Great. Well, how old is he?
The language that you have in front of you is.
He's three, right? Is he three?
He turned three yesterday.
And he's learning how to read?
Yeah.
Wow. His dad is teaching him how to read.
Yeah, his mom does a fair bit as well.
And his mom too, right. His parents, sorry.
He's sight reading, he's sight reading some words at this point. You know, he's not quite hooked on phonics yet.
You're not pushing that kid very hard, are you?
We have a good time. The language that you have in front of you is the language that was approved unanimously by the advisory committee, unanimously supported by the public, oh, I'm gonna get it wrong, the.
Council on Public.
Council on Public Health.
Council on Public Health.
And so forth. Someone may, may observe that, that sort of language at the very top, the article XX, to see if the town will amend, yada, yada, that's probably no longer necessary at this point, and, and I'm sure no one would protest if it was correctly removed, but the, the meat and potatoes, starting at page 13 dash 5, Article 8.23, all the way through 13 dash 14, section 8.23.7, that is the, the final, warrant article four as amended and approved by all folks involved.
Great, so is there anything you wanna tell us about this now? Is there any change that's significant that we should know about?
There are no significant changes. We cleaned up a few of the problems, including the problems Selectman Banka observed about how employees were being compared to vending machines.
Right.
But, but no, there's, there's nothing unexpected, and I would again remind the Board of Selectmen that because the goal is no change in policy and to get this thing right, even after you vote today, if we discover there's something that we don't like, we can still change it for the better, and I am happy to work toward that goal.
Okay, so are there any questions for Mr. Dr. Vitolo while we have him before us?
Nope.
Nope?
I'll, I'll just, I wasn't here for the original discussion, I'll just, the, you know, the big, the big movement in the tobacco industry, as I understand it, is the move towards electronic cigarettes.
Right.
And I, I know this is just a housekeeping kinda thing, but it's just something we ought to put in, put on our radar.
Absolutely, and I believe it's been raised and the moderator ruled it out of the scope of this article, but I'm sure the public health people have on their agenda.
It was not my interest to get involved in the e-cigarette debate. I will let you know that Dr. Balsam is working with his peers in a number of other communities on a broader, sort of moving the Tobacco Control Bylaw into the 21st century, and that would include flavored tobacco, cigarillos, e-cigarettes, and perhaps my hope that we increase the percent of smoke-free hotel rooms from our current 90% to 100%. But that's for another town meeting and another night.
Frankly, I think, Tommy, what this does is this, by cleaning up the existing bylaw and bringing it into conformity with state law, this really sets a clean slate for any further changes that are gonna happen.
That's my hope.
And, you know, that just makes a lot of sense.
Okay, we ready to take a vote then on Article, which number is it, four? Then I move that we vote favorable action on Article four in the language as amended. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Banka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we expect to see you back when the next revision takes place.
Hopefully, we got it right this time.
Well, I, I was actually thinking about needing to amend it in a way that addresses those other issues, so I assume we will see you then.
Perhaps.
Perhaps, okay. Alright. Article 16, we have a advisory committee voted version under Article 16, and my impression was there was a modified petitioner's version, yes, alright, so you have a modified petitioner's version? No? This is the, this is the voted.
This is a different article.
Oh, sorry, this is Article 17, I missed that. Right, okay, here we go. Yes, they seem to be identical. 13 dash 25.
Right.
So, are there comments from members of the board?
I want to suggest that it's possibly inappropriate for the Board of Selectmen to vote on this article at all.
I was wondering that too, if we should.
I'm gonna abstain.
Abstain.
Well, we could all abstain, that's certainly one way to do it.
Look, I, I think that giving ourselves a directive is kinda.
It's strange, very strange.
I will, I will say, I mean, since we have made the decision to make some short-term appointments, even while, well, I, I thought that there had been some general discussion.
Well, what we've, what we've agreed is that we will, we have a pool of candidates available to be interviewed, and we hope to start interviewing as early as next week, so.
But I mean, we have not.
I don't know, I don't know whether we'll get to appointments, but we'll certainly do interviews.
I mean, I know that some individuals expressed the view that we should make appointments, but this board has not made a decision, just to be clear.
Okay. No, no, but we have, we have certainly got candidates now.
Yeah, one, one thing I, I feel strongly on is that I think it's inappropriate for town meeting to be resolving to appoint specific individuals, no matter, you know, how one feels about this particular board. I think it's a terrible precedent, and I'd state that for the record.
Okay, and I think also for the record, it should be made clear that at the time the Selectmen's Committee on Diversity was appointed, in fact, there were sufficient members to provide a quorum. It was not something that was anticipated at the time. But we can take no action, just simply not move the article, or?
Well, could, can we vote for an extension?
Vote and abstain? I mean, take a motion, have a motion?
Yeah, 'cause that's different than a no-action recommendation.
Sure, alright, so.
I, I'm not sure that that's even a, a thing that, that you can vote for as abstention. I mean, we could each vote, and we could each say abstain. I don't know if as a board we can vote for abstain.
Well, I think if we move, if we move either favorable or no action, then your vote can be aye abstain, whatever the motion is, you can move, you can vote abstain.
Okay.
I mean, I agree that it is kind of, I, I was thinking about that earlier today. It's ridiculous for us to be voting to tell ourselves to do something, and I think we have abstained in the past.
So, it can either be a favorable action, a motion for favorable action on the advisory.
Yeah, I'll move favorable action on the advisory committee's vote under Article 16.
Alright, that, that certainly seems to fit. Then all in favor, please say aye or no or abstain. Selectman Daley?
Abstain.
Selectman Banka?
Abstain.
Selectman Goldstein?
Abstain.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Abstain.
And the chair abstains. Moving on, we have Article 17 also amended, and I think maybe there's an advisory committee version and a petitioner's version which are not identical, and I believe we have a petitioner here to tell us.
I think this, this was something that.
Just came around.
Mr. Farlow, but I believe this is the same exact version that was in our packet.
Okay, alright.
So, if you want it, you can have it, but it is the same.
Oh, alright.
This was just distributed.
Oh, okay. Fancy paper.
Yeah.
Everybody got one? Yes, Mr. Farlow is right there. Alright, my question is whether, as I understood it, the advisory committee vote is not identical to the petitioner's vote, and I believe that is true. Is that not, Mr. Farlow?
Correct, Frank Farlow, town meeting member, President Ford. I'll tell you what the differences are.
Okay, please do.
I wanna point out first that in the revised version I've provided to you tonight, I've shown, lined through the wording deleted from the original version. I think we'll probably delete these lined-through portions in the final version submitted for inclusion in the combined reports. Their inclusion was perhaps a benighted attempt to help you deal with it tonight. When the resolution was submitted, the Obama administration, as you know, had just begun its campaign to persuade Congress to authorize its plan to attack Syria. The intent of the petitioners was to modify the language of the resolution as necessary before town meeting, depending on how the situation developed. If an attack had not yet occurred, the resolved clauses were to take the form that I've provided to you tonight. Since an attack has not occurred, and furthermore, there have been unexpectedly promising diplomatic developments concerning both Syria and Iran, the petitioners have accepted the advisory committee's recommendation that most of the whereas clauses be deleted, and those you see lined through. However, we've retained most of one whereas clause deleted by the advisory committee, and its revised content is shown near the bottom of page two. It now reads, whereas our numerous recent extra-treaty interventions, starting with Vietnam, have resulted in many deaths and injuries and have been expensive beyond measure, resting funding from an ever-increasing range of pressing domestic needs. The costs of this century's continuous warfare have been without precedent, and it's our feeling that the country's severe domestic needs should be addressed. Finally, and this'll probably be what concerns you most, in the main resolved clause, the words, "to eliminate the government's chemical weapons" have also been removed. The advisory committee removed more words than that. They removed. Beginning with the word instead.
Frank?
Yes.
For the, for the board members, what was handed out on the fancy paper is incorrect. What was in our packet on page 1336 is correct, is what the advisory committee.
No, but this was, this is petitioner's revised version, so it's correct.
Oh, okay, okay.
For, he's differing from the advisory committee.
Got you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, what I'm talking about is what I have to teach tonight.
You're suggesting the language, some of the language they put out, they took out, they put back in.
Correct.
Okay, got, got it.
No, some of the language they tried to take out, we've resisted.
Alright, so, we are a little overwhelmed here with versions.
Yeah.
Can I, can I confuse matters even more?
Oh, please, jump in.
No, no, I, I actually have some comments about the references to the UN Charter.
Would you hold those to at least?
And I will hold those.
You're welcome to make them, but I just wanted the whereas's together first.
So.
Well, I think that one's, I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm concerned about that particular clause too. I'll, I'll tell you, and I said this concern before, I think when a country starts using poisonous gas against its own citizens, and particularly directed against non-combatants, children sleeping at, at night, I, I don't, I don't wanna say that my country should never act in that situation, and that, that's a little bit my concern here. And the, the UN Charter, certainly the clause you cite is saying that, that, you know, we could not take, we could not use military force.
Actually, the actual clauses that are cited, Selectman Daley, are up on the screen, and we can take a look at them.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're even physically in your packet.
Okay.
Regardless the precise wording of the clauses, I'd comment in response to Nancy, as I think I did last time, that I think this objection, which I referred to as the humanitarian intervention objection, is one that reasonable people can take. We hope that, under current circumstances, under the circumstances of this situation, most people would be able to postpone serious consideration of that as an objection this time around.
Well, I certainly am.
But as, as you, as you have inferred, it is our view that, that it's the sort of decision that only the most powerful nation in the world is likely to take in the face of adopted international law. But if we do it, it of course encourages other, other countries to do it in the future, and that, and that gets, that gets back in our minds to history preceding the United Nations.
Now, I appreciate that, but my concern is that, as I understand it, the way the Security Council works is a, a nation committing such heinous crimes against its own people only needs one strong friend on the Security Council in order to get them not to take any action.
Correct.
And that's a, I mean, my, I mean, generally, I'm all in favor of trying to work collaboratively together. Unfortunately, that's not a majority rules body. It's.
It is, it is a law, however, that was created by majority rule.
Okay, can, can we let Selectman Banka at least walk us through the, since we're having a discussion about the United Nations, Selectman Banka now?
Thank you. First of all, let me acknowledge that the majority of commentators have taken the position that unilateral action is not authorized under international law, but a number have said that one cannot apply that without condition. And I, let me pose a couple of hypotheticals and then go to the language of the, the UN, or actually, let me start with the language of the UN Charter. The third whereas clause says that the UN Charter decrees that no nation can use military force except in self-defense, and it cites Article 39 and Article 51. Those are, Melissa, if you can move down, 39 and 51 are up on the board, or will be shortly. They are not by their explicit and express terms exclusive. It says, "The Security Council shall determine the existence of a threat to the peace and so forth," and 51 says. And 51 says, "Nothing in the present Charter shall impair, shall impair the right of individual or collective self-defense if an armed attack occurs." But nothing in those articles says it is only in that case, only in the case of self-defense that a, that a country may act outside of the scope of the United Nations. The whereas clause then goes on to say, "The Security Council is the only body that can authorize the use of force." Now, that's, cites 24, if we can go to 24. And again, it says, "Its members confer on the Security Council primary responsibility for the maintenance of international peace." It does not confer on the Security Council exclusive responsibility for the maintenance of international peace. And finally, Clause Three says, "Only the Security Council can decide what action can be taken to maintain or restore international peace of security," citing 39. And again, it does say, "The Security Council shall determine the threat," but again, as in 24, it doesn't say they are the exclusive body that can do that. And I would, I would just pose two hypotheticals. One following up on Selectman Daley's concern. If Assad had in fact acknowledged the use of chemical weapons and said that it was his decision and not the decision of a rogue commander, and if he had stated that he would continue to use those chemical weapons in areas of rebel activity, even if it would kill hundreds of thousands of non-combatant and innocent men, women, and children, and his ally on the Security Council vetoed United Nations action, would we say that members of the international community could not intervene? I know that's not our case. I know that our case is much more ambiguous, but I think that the, the whereas clause is stated as an absolute that applies in all cases. Let me give another hypothetical. If you had a ruler who had an explicit policy of extermination of particular racial, ethnic, tribal, or religious groups within his borders, and he was clearly limiting this cleansing, ethnic, racial, religious, or whatever, to his own citizens within his own borders.
Rwanda.
Or, let's assume that you had a führer who had not indicated any expansionist territories, but was simply doing cleansing within the borders of his own country. And this cleansing was in fact going on against whatever group was disfavored, and again, his ally on the Security Council vetoed United Nations action, would we take the position that the international, members of the international community could not intervene in that situation? I am not willing to take that position in either of those hypotheticals, and I think that the reference to the United Nations Charter and the characterization of the United Nations Charter is stated in absolutist terms, and I am not willing to accept that whereas clause for that reason.
I, I could vote for your version, Mr. Farlow, if you took out that whereas clause. Also, that, that is the particular language that troubles me, and particularly in view of the fact that that's not exactly what the Charter says.
Well, I must say regretfully that I did not come prepared to address these questions. They're certainly good questions. I don't have my copies of, of the Charter with me. I noticed that there's-
Not willing to take it from Selectman Binka on faith.
Well, if, I must say, if-
I am generally inclined to take very seriously what Dick says. My brain does not work under these circumstances ultra-rapidly with language of this sort.
In fairness, Mr. Farlow, since you only saw this for the first time this evening, I don't believe that it's appropriate for us to try to, that it's not appropriate for you to try to be qualified to comment on this criticism, and we can wait and vote it next week, maybe.
Yeah, I'm certainly, I'm certainly willing to hold it.
I think that would be a much fairer way of dealing with this.
Yeah.
It's, it's a very complicated matter, and it's being raised at the last minute. I don't feel comfortable putting you in that situation.
If that, if that whereas clause was, was rewritten to a little more accurately reflect the language, and I will, I'm going to give you my copy of the language Selectman Binka gave to all of us, or if it was, that whereas was eliminated, I could vote for your version.
Okay. A question for Dick.
Yeah.
The reference concerning the Security Council as being the only body that can authorize the use of force is to both Article 24 and-
Yeah, there's, Chapter, Chapter Seven just talks about the procedures. There's no express language in there that I saw that, that gives them exclusive authority. That's, Chapter Seven is about six or eight articles in the UN Charter. And I may have missed it, but I, I didn't see anything in there either.
Although I don't welcome it.
But while, while we-
It certainly is appropriate to look further into it.
While we have you here, though, the one thing you could comment on appropriately, because I'm sure you've discussed this, and you heard what the advisory committee decided to vote, is the other difference between your current version and the advisory committee. Are you able and willing to take on just explaining that to us? Which, which would be the fact that they deleted the whereas about extra-treaty interventions, and you've included it with a modification. It says, "Whereas our numerous-"
At the, at the end of my comments, I intended to say, and I thought I had said this first sentence, but maybe not, "The costs of this century's continued warfare have been without precedent, and it's our feeling that the country's severe domestic, that the impact of those expenditures on the country's increasingly severe domestic needs should be addressed in this context." That was a strong feeling amongst the four petitioners.
Okay. So.
And finally, the moderator did approve the revision we presented to the advisory committee, but not yet this one. However, since this one is, contains only deletions from the previous one, I would assume it's safe. Last sentence, "If an attack were to occur before town meeting, between now and town meeting, I'm afraid I must caution you that we will revise it again toward that scenario."
Of course, I think we would certainly understand that.
So.
Okay, so, the, there, so there, if we just refer to the advisory committee language and your current language, there is a whereas included in your language that they deleted entirely, and there is a line in yours under resolved that they also deleted.
A part of a line. I, I think, too, the easiest way to say it, Chairman DeWitt, is that the whereas clause at the top of-
Yeah, there's-
The fancy paper.
Right. Ivory paper.
Is added, and then the words, if you bracket them in, in the first resolved clause, "Instead of carrying out a unilateral attack as originally proposed," are added back in.
Right.
From the advisory committee version.
Okay, so, I'm just-
I think with my help, and Betsy's and Dick's, we probably have it nearly straight.
Okay. Given that we're not going to take a vote on it tonight, I'm trying to be sure that we, at least while you're here, have the opportunity to hear, if anything you want to add to those differences. That's really where I was trying to make it clear.
I think not.
Okay.
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 Could I, as, as you go off and ponder this, I'm going to actually direct your attention to a provision of the UN Charter, Article Two, Pren Four, which does state, "All members shall refrain in their international relations from the threat or use of force against the territorial integrity or political independence of any state, or in any other manner inconsistent with the purposes of the United Nations." You didn't cite that in, in the resolution. And I, you know, I suppose one could cite it, but certainly, in this particular case, there was no assertion that force would be used to change the territory of Syria or to change the political independence, or for regime change purposes, so. And, and one would also argue that, I think, the Obama administration would argue that the use was actually consistent with the purposes of the United Nations, among that being human rights, advancing human rights. And I would think that human rights would include the freedom to be free from attack by chemical weapons. So, I just, you should take a look at Article Two dash four. You might want to say, "Hey, that's, that's, that's something that we can rely on."
Used previously, Two, Pren, Four.
Two, Pren, Four, yes, Two, Pren, Four. So, but, I, I would just ask you to consider the hypotheticals, and whether there is, and whether we, as a town and as town meeting and as citizens of Brookline, should assert the absolutist position that there are no circumstances in which unilateral action could be appropriate in the face of a Security Council veto.
You bring to mind something that is peripheral, I suppose, but might be worth saying. Someone said some years ago that it's a lot easier to get into a military intervention than it is to get out. One of the things that we have learned from our own nation's history is that, once one gets in, the motivations can change, the stated motivations can change, and one of the possible motivations that can be added, and certainly, there are those in Congress who would like to add it, is regime change.
Right, right. My, my, my only, and I think really the essence of my concern, Frank, is with the, the absolute statements, that under all circumstances unilateral action would be contrary to the principles of international law and the UN Charter. And I'm, I can think of situations that have occurred before the existence of the UN and after the existence of the UN where I think that it would be appropriate for members of the international community to intervene, so.
Good.
Okay. Are we, we have any more questions while we have Mr. Farlow before us? Now, Mr. Bassett, were you trying to add something to this?
Yes.
You need to go to the microphone.
John Bassett, 26, Sur Avenue, Town Meeting Member from Precinct Six. I've always been enthusiastic about town meeting, making resolutions on national policies. I'm not sure we should be addressing the UN Charter, but in any case, I think it's, well, there are four petitioners, and we'll go over this, this discussion, but I think all of us are coming, are reacting to the, what we thought was originally proposed, the words that we would, that we feel that it is important to keep, that the advisory committee removed, are instead of the original, originally proposed unilateral action. I think this is, I think it's important to, to focus, to, to think smaller, and remember what we knew of what was being proposed. There was no actual proposal. The President said he would take it to Congress, he never did. So, what we got was a lot of stuff in the press about no boots on the ground, regime change, Soviet sophisticated air defenses, firing hundreds of Tomahawk missiles from the Mediterranean, weapons that are dispersed and hidden, whatever. It seemed to us, when the article was first drafted, that all of this not only may be in violation of international norms and even law, but would not be effective, would not seriously damage the terrible weapons that Assad has, would not advance particularly the cause of our allies, whoever they are, and that's another question. So, the, the words as originally proposed, as the originally proposed unilateral intervention are, I think, important and essential, and without them, I think this resolution makes little sense. If, the advisory committee's version could be applied to almost any policy that, that one likes, I hope that you will, or that we will together find a way to keep those words opposing the originally imagined unilateral action. I hope we can keep those in. Thanks.
Thank you. Comments?
Nope.
Nope? Okay, then, we'll hold this for a vote at a next meeting, and I believe that concludes-
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. The Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, October 29.